It's six o'clock. We're gonna call this meeting to order, and if we could, we're gonna ask Carmen Christler to come up, if y'all would stand while he leads us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Christler, would you come up for a minute? Alderman Miller, would you lead our invocation?
Thank you. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, once again, Lord, we're coming before you first to tell you thank you for all your many different blessings. Then we ask you, Lord, for guiding us on tonight as we make decisions for this city. We pray, Lord, that our decision that we make will be pleasing in our sight. Then, Lord, we thank you for the opportunity to serve you, given each and every one of us. Continue, Lord, to bless this city, this county, this state, and this nation. Amen.
Amen. Okay. We have six aldermen present in person, and Alderman Bruce Robinson is traveling for work, but he has called in, so he is present remotely. Can I have a motion to approve this amended agenda?
Motion.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. The agenda is approved. Item five, can I have a motion to approve the docket of claim numbers listed on your agenda?
So move.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. The motion passes. Item six is to approve the minutes from the regular mayor and board of alderman meeting on November 4th, 2025. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
A motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes. Item seven is the consent agenda. Can I have a motion on that?
Motion to approve. Second.
Alderwoman Lynch and Alderman McClendon, first and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Consent agenda passes. Item eight is the personnel agenda. Can I have a motion on that?
Motion.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Personnel docket passes. Item nine is the donations docket. Can I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Donations docket passes. Item 10 is the approval of a resolution for North Delta Planning and Development District, Inc., to prepare and submit a FY 2026 Community Development Block Grant, public facilities application with a possible 60% match for the budgeted project. I'm sorry, this is not a budgeted project. This will be something we would work on in the next year's budget at the Gale Center for ADA possible parking lot and other ADA items, and to advertise and conduct required public hearings, advertise and conduct a review of architecture engineering proposals, and have the mayor sign all documents. And if we could, Daryl is here with the Planning and Development District. Daryl, could you give a brief synopsis of what we're talking about here for the board and how we got to this point and what might could happen?
Sure. Good evening, Mayor and Board. I'm Daryl Dixon with North Delta Planning and Development District. We're a regional planning and development agency, and we administer state and federal funds on behalf of our communities. So the Community Development Block Grant program is housing and urban development funding that's for the benefit of low to moderate income individuals and households. We initiated a conversation with the mayor, finding that the 2020 census information made area within the city available for this funding and talking about potential applications here at the Gale Center with improvements that can be done with those funds because the beneficiaries can be considered low to moderate income individuals. And so the resolution that we have before you would preserve the city's right to apply in the 2026 cycle for funding that is put forth by Mississippi Development Authority. And so if the city is to approve this resolution, it would give North Delta the ability to put together an application after the city has procured for professional services for architecture, to put together potential ADA accessibility improvements at the Gale Center, and then give the mayor the ability to sign all those necessary documents. So I can answer any questions you may have about that, if you have any.
And just for a little frank background, we had entered into these discussions thinking that we could possibly use this grant for the already budgeted project of putting a roof and air conditioning on the Gale Center, because that's a necessary thing. On further exploring of that, it's just not possible within this grant at this time. So we just wanted to talk about what we could do. By the time we got all the paperwork done and possibly got something awarded, it would be into our next budget year. So we need to budget a match, but there is money available, and we do need expanded parking and expanded Americans with Disabilities Act access to the Gale Center, so this might be an opportunity for us to qualify for funds. The reason I put a 60% match here is anything over 50% accorded to Daryl really bumps up our chances of getting it.
That's exactly right. Because of the population of the city, you have to compete in the regular government category, which requires a dollar-for-dollar match. But if you go any above that, it increases the amount of points that you get in the competition.
And also for the record, Daryl, that you're sure with them that because of the census block and the data from the West End area, there was the only area in the whole city that would be eligible to even apply for this grant.
That's exactly right. And based on that 2020 census data, it's eligible at 92%. But the requirement of the program is that you have to prove that whatever improvements are done benefits at least 90% of the people that live within that census tract.
And this project here would meet those standards, you know?
That's right.
So why would the... This is ADA parking at the Gale Center, right?
That's right. That's what we're talking about.
Why would that be beneficial to 90% of the population, but the roof not be? The facilities are used by the same people.
Yeah, the question about the limited clientele, in this case, if you do ADA accessibility, those who are disabled, as well as those who are likely used, the senior citizens are presumed to be 100% low to moderate income individuals. So that's, yeah.
Are there any other questions, or would someone like to make a motion to enter into an agreement to have him start the application process for us?
So move.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes.
All right.
Daryl, we'll get to work with you. Thank you for bringing it to our attention.
Thank you, Daryl.
Item 11 is the approval to accept the lowest and best bid of $137,869 for the additional curb and gutter along Highway 51 from Altera Construction LLC, as recommended by Neil Schaefer, Inc., to finish the legislative funding of the Oak Grove Highway 51 Roundabout Project. We do have approximately $94,000 of that legislative money left that can only be spent on this project. We would have to fund the difference out of our own funds to finish that project out. So Philip, are you... Would you like to come up and discuss it very quickly?
Sure. Good evening, Mayor, Board. My name is Philip O'Levy with Neil Schaefer. As mentioned, we opened bids to extend the curb and gutter north of the roundabout on 51. The bid was broken into a base bid, additive alternate, to help get it in the money. As the mayor mentioned, we had $94,000 to kind of work with. And so we received two bids, and Altera has agreed to actually match. The other bidder had a lower price for his additive alternate, so he's agreed to match that, which would knock off $5,000 if you were to like to do the additive alternate. And we would just add that in by a change order. So that's why we're recommending the base bid at this time, and if the board sees fit, the change order can be added at a later date. So, excuse me, if we are to award the base bid of $137,000 and some change, with the $94,000 taken out of that with the grant money, you're looking at $43,000 and some change. To add the alternate in later, you'd be looking at $91,000.
What kind of timeline are they talking about on this project?
The timeline is probably get started sometime next month, and then it's a, I believe it is a 45-day contract time. I actually don't have that in front of me right now, but it's pretty quick.
And just for a little bit more background information, when we bid this project of that roundabout, we thought it was going to be pretty tight on money, so we didn't include that curbing, which was kind of recommended by the highway department, but it wasn't included in the initial. Then we did come in a little bit with some cost savings because MDOT ended up doing the P and E for us on it, and we didn't have to pay for that. So that's how we ended up with some money left, so we could go ahead and possibly extend this curbing with that money the legislature gave us. We were hoping to do it without having to add something to it, but obviously we'll have to add a little to it.
So what fund and source are we going to use for that additional $44,000, somewhere in that range?
We've got extra money left in contingency in the modernization use tax money, and I would recommend that's where we would pull that from. That's separate fund that we generally use just for roads and sewer improvements.
But this wasn't budgeted, right?
It was not. And the $94,000 we have left can be used on this project. If we don't use it, we'll have to give it back to the legislature.
When's the deadline to utilize that money?
It's coming up within the next nine months or so, isn't it? And the deadline for the money to be spent?
I think we had about three years.
Yeah, it was a total of three years, and this was the last piece. We got it in three tranches, and this was the last tranche of the money. So we still got a few months, but if we do this, we'll have it done in time.
Could we trim some of this to bring it down closer, so that there's less coming out of the city's pocket? I mean, is that possible?
What is it now?
Like to trim it a little bit further, because I see, you know, they've got the alternative piece, and then the main bid piece. Is there any way we could shrink it a little bit more to just have less coming out of our pockets and...
Like you said, then you said $5,000 on the alternative?
No, the alternative was like...
Yeah, the alternative is...
The other bid.
The alternative is up front of the car wash.
Are you saying can we accept some of the lines off the bid and reject some of the lines?
Basically, yeah.
Like the maintenance of traffic is $20,000. Like that's something that's completely separate from the actual construction, correct? So I mean, could we, can we accept a bid and reject that piece of it? Because that would be, that would get us $20,000 closer to our budget. Is that, like, for example? I'm not saying that's...
Something to trim it down so that there's a little bit less coming in. Because I'd hate to lose $94,000 over something, but if we don't have that full amount in the money that we've set aside for this, then...
So Philip, if we started trying to pick their bid apart and take pieces out of it, would that be something they would allow or not allow?
I think with a project this size, might be a little difficult, but, I mean, they worked with this on the additive alternate, and maybe we could further discuss trimming down the base bid.
That is a good idea if it could be done.
Yeah.
And we've got a little bit of time, so what if, what if we were to table it and you could go back and talk to them and see what they, what items they could cut out of this? It's still hit the areas possibly in front of the, you know, the two areas we're trying to hit, but maybe trim some things out of this in a negotiation process?
We also have to make sure that we talk to MDOT, because a lot of this was on their recommendation also, to make sure that we stay within what their guideline recommend out at the same time, because we don't want to get on the other side of that.
When we sent this out for bid, weren't we expecting it to be lower than this?
We weren't sure.
Okay.
It's always hard on a project this size to get, when you do your estimate, when it's, you can't really factor in all the mobilization for such a small project. But that was the intent of the, of the add alternate, was hopefully the intent, hopefully the bids came in and the base was under, and the additive alternate would be utilized to fully... We just wanted to make sure we used the full $94,000, but unfortunately, in this case, even the base bid went above that, so.
I think it'd be worth asking the question to see if we could sharpen it a little bit, just to have less come in.
Would you like to make a motion to that effect?
Yes. Yeah.
We have someone here to ask. Will you go ahead and make your motion, and then we'll have a discussion?
Sure. Or does it make more sense to just...
We can have the discussion first. Would you like to come up?
Yes. Hi, I'm Dan Beard, 1065 Fronie Drive. My recollection was it was mentioned that we had a $250,000 surplus remaining in this fund. So question one is, did we have cost overruns or something unusual happen to get it down to only having $94,000 available? And question number two is spending nearly $50,000 more out of unbudgeted resources to me seems pretty unwise, and I would be encouraging you to really think about just forgetting this, and if the state doesn't like it, they can bring their concrete truck in. But this, this went from, oh my goodness, we're going to lose a quarter million dollars to, oh, let's write a check for nearly 50 grand. So that seems out of place and uncalled for, and I just encourage you to set this aside or table it permanently or something like that. I mean, if you're going to table it, then if you can get that $46,000 back, that would be great. But I don't think we should spend the money because it was there, and obviously, we didn't even have a option in the original contract to put this in if we came in with the actual billing to be under budget. So it just makes sense to defer this. That's my opinion.
Thank you. Have we heard correctly? I think some of your numbers are all, first of all, about that $250,000 surplus, but we're not getting into that right now. But there was some recommendation that was done on the get-go. It wasn't something that we, we did not do because of possible overrun. So it wasn't nothing that wasn't already recommended to be done, and that's correct.
That's correct.
So...
But it was put in the original bid package, I think.
I'm talking, I let you talk.
Well, I'm responding to what you said.
So there again, we're doing what necessary from a safety standpoint and everything else. And with the money that we did receive, we have saved taxpayer dollars and made it useful. And then to take instead of, that if we're going to just take $94,000 and send it back when we know that that's a need to be done, I don't think that's wise on us as stewards of this city money. And that's just my opinion, and you have yours, so we're not going to debate about it. I'm just saying.
And I'm going to give a little more background. We noticed we did curbing on the other side, on the west side of the road, and it does direct the traffic better as they enter. And while that was going on, the property owners across the street came out and said, hey, we're, we're having trouble over here. Why did we not get curbing? And we promised that we would look at that because it is a safety issue. As you're leaving the roundabout, having the curbing there is going to help define it a little better, help people get in and out of those driveways, make those more defined. So it is, it is going to increase safety. But I think what you're saying is kind of what the motion's going to be from Alderman McClendon, is that we go back and look at it so we don't spend much more than the $94,000.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that would practically implement what I'm saying. If it, if we can, you know, not have to put any more city funds to this project, I think that would be great. I do think that the process of spending government money before it disappears, it's common in government entities, and that's why people run up huge deficits. So anyway, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Beard. Any other questions or concerns? Not Alderman McClendon, did you want to proffer your motion?
Yeah, so I'd like for us to, I'd like to make a motion for us to go back to Altera and see if they can sharpen their pencil to get it closer to match what the money is from the legislature. I, yeah.
And bring it back at the next meeting?
Bring it back at the next meeting would be ideal. Yeah.
Second, the motion to table.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes. Thank you. Thank you, Philip. Item 12, PL 1930, the Wilkins C-2 rezoning. Tonight, Kristen is going to be offering these up for us. You would like to go ahead and start?
Yes, sir. The first one is PL 1930. It's a request for a zoning map amendment of two parcels located on the north side of Christopher Lane and east of Highway 51. George Reedy is representing the application. The request is to rezone the properties from AR Agricultural Residential to C-2 Highway Commercial. The future land use map and general development plan identifies this to be a proposed activity commercial master plan. This generally, a commercial zoning would be in conformance with the master plan. Since this is a straight C-2 zoning request, all uses for that particular zoning district are dictated by the C-2 zoning designation, and I believe those are included in your packet. For tonight's record, I'll read the three approval or denial criteria for a rezoning, how the proposed amendment would conform to the general development plan, why the existing zoning district classification of the property in question is inappropriate or improper, that major economic, physical, or social changes, if any, have occurred in the vicinity of the property that were not anticipated by the general development plan substantially altered, or substantially altered the basic character of the area, which make the proposed amendment to the zoning map, district map, appropriate. The applicant has provided responses to each of these, which are located in your packet. A surrounding zoning map, which highlights the two parcels in question, along with legal descriptions for each parcel, can be found in your staff report. Both parcels are listed under the same, under one request, just for time purposes, but if the board chooses, they can be heard individually. Proposed motions to approve, deny, or table the application are provided in your staff report, and Mr. Reedy is here tonight, and I'm available if you have any questions.
Does the board have any questions for Kristen before Mr. Reedy comes up? If not, Mr. Reedy, would you like to present?
Yes, sir. May I, Kristen?
George Reedy. My office is at 175 East Commerce here in Hernando. I think everybody knows me. I pretty much know everybody, I think, here. At least met you. I'm representing Pleasant Hill Developments, which of course is Mr. Cal Wilkins, Pleasant Hill Investments LLC, I apologize, which is Mr. Cal Wilkins. I think most of you know Mr. Cal, too. He's a good, good citizen and neighbor of DeSoto County and Hernando in particular. We have submitted this request, and I will go through the explanation of the request and all the factors that you're supposed to consider under the law. How would the proposed amendment conform to the general development plan? Well, clearly, as stated by Kristen, it meets the effective request of the city that it be rezoned in that area. The master plan shows all that area to go commercial in some fashion and some rating. And in fact, except for the ones that have not been changed at all, most of them still belong to some members of the Christopher family and the Massey family. Everything else has been changed to some form of C over there. This is directly to the north of the big Entergy office. Billy Haynes' old place, which has been converted into a similar business, is directly across the street. There's just been recently approved by the city, I believe, automobile repair garage with some baseballs throw also, and everything is C-2 to the north or C-4. C-1 over there behind, off the road, behind Mr. Haynes on the road that goes back in there. So it's clear that the intent and the wishes of the city, as per its adopted master plan over 20 years ago, is falling into place, and this is just a request to do the same Clearly, under the second requirement, there's been a change in the neighborhood, because when all this was originally AR, it was nothing but farmland and houses, and it has all gone commercial or is going that way. So there clearly has been a change in the neighborhood, and that applies to the third category, too. The economic changes, the social changes, there's been complete change in the neighborhood. Again, the majority of the surrounding area has been changed as some kind of C's designation. And the fourth one, which is required under law but not is, is not on your application, is there a public need? And we believe that there is a public need because there is a need for a small business lots. These are very small lots. And again, I want to be clear, you can see it's two different pieces. This is not a request to combine them into one parcel. There is actually property in between them. This is two separate parcels. We just submitted the application after discussion with Austin, and he said it was appropriate to do this way to get it, both of them before the board at the same time, since they were owned by the same landowner. But they will remain two separate lots. One of them is about two acres, and one of them is about three acres. One faces Christopher Lane, one faces Highway 51. And there is a public need for small, smaller lots for C-2 in the area that are not already occupied, because most of them, they're already occupied. And I would also point out that the nearest ones for C-2 and even M-1, because there is substantial amount of M-1 in this area, but the industrial park, the old industrial park on Old 51 Motor Scooter Drive, there's only one lot left in that that is not being used in some fashion by one of the owners. And the Nesbit Industrial Park, which Davis is and his partners plot down there, they are just about full. So we would submit this, that it meets all the required legal requirements, and it falls into the plan of the city for the master plan for what they want in that area, and we would request that you approve this change to C-2 zoning for these two lots. Happy to answer some questions if...
What questions does the board have for Mr. Reedy?
I was wondering if y'all would be, and the size of the lots may kind of dictate this anyway, but strike out some of the uses in C-2 that are included, just to...
this anyway, but strike out some of the uses in C-two that are included, just to, like, I've got a few of the numbers if you want me to read through them.
Sure. If you want to submit what they are, Ms. Lynch?
Um, number two, four, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty-eight, and then thirty-five to forty-two.
Okay, um, so I will give a general response first, right? So we would prefer not to do that, and I suspect that it might be better for the city not to do that because everybody else up there has a, already has a naked, I call them naked, naked C-two zonings, or C-fours or C-ones, right? So literally, all around these places, everything that, that you would like to take out can already be done, right there, looking at these properties and anybody that's around those properties. Uh, and I would suggest, um, for administrative purposes and legal purposes, it might be better if the city had concerns with some of those being in C-two, then, uh, amendments to the zoning ordinances in Hernando would be the much more appropriate way to handle it, since you've already got this other naked C-two approved up there. Uh, Mr. Wilkins probably wouldn't object to some of those, but I think it's, uh, it would be something really you need, would want to think about if you want to set that precedent, since you have all these other naked zonings up there, that all of that can go in there. Um, and you're right, I would say probably fifty percent or more of what's approved, allowed under C-two is not feasibly workable anyway because of the size of the lots. With a three acre lot and a two acre lot, most of that stuff is not gonna get on there, right? So, um, I can, I can ask Mr. Wilkins, I've already talked to him preliminarily about some things, just in case this came up, because it does come up sometimes, so I need to ask. Can I have one second to ask about one of those?
While, while you're asking it, I actually had two more uses, conditional uses, uh, mini warehouses and.
Conditional uses?
Conditional uses.
Well, that doesn't really matter because you have to come back to the city to be.
You have to go back to the planning commission.
Oh, and it's not the board?
Yeah.
Okay. Let's see. Okay.
If the planning commission rejected it, you could appeal it to the board.
That's right. I mean, the board has the, yeah, okay, I got you, but go ahead, Mr. Kitchens.
That was it, fuel pumps and mini warehouses.
Fuel pumps? I'm sorry, which one is that?
That is, a good question.
I see mini warehouses as well.
Conditional, conditional use twenty-three.
Twelve and twenty-three? it with ordinances, um, and again, you have some of these things that you're objecting to, you would like to remove that are already there in the area. There's a, there's an automobile garage across the street. So, um, we would have no objection to removing number two. Number four. I will just ask a question about the lumberyard. Now, that would be like a building store. You don't want a building store in an area that, that is, a lot of building is gonna be going on, especially when they build the Star Landing Road?
Oh, I pictured lumberyard as more just like stacks of big, um, you know, unprocessed trees.
I'm sorry, I picture it like Hernando Lumber Company used to be right here.
That's right. Herna, well, if it was something like that.
Okay, so you, you, you would like to have it removed or not removed?
That, that would be okay if it was that type of.
Okay, so that's.
Lumber supply. So you're saying like lumber supply?
Well, yeah, like Hernando Equipment or the one that's on Center Street, right behind, I think that's what the definition of that is, I think. I, I don't, I don't know. So you need to tell me.
I would think it would be like the Maximus or the Hernando Lumber is what I'm picturing.
Yeah, that's what I picture, a lumberyard. I think you, I, I, so it's okay to leave that in, then?
That'd be fine.
Okay, so not taken out. Okay, we don't have any problem with the removal of eighteen. Nineteen, we would prefer, we, we would object to the removal of nineteen, uh, because we're not sure what that is, because that could, again, to us, the definition of the garage is in there, and you have a garage that's already across the street. So we would, we would object to removal of nineteen. Twenty-eight is fine. Thirty-five, uh, we would object to that, that might get into, if Mr. Wilkins decided to use some of this for his, because he's in the used farm equipment business, and we don't know whether somebody might decide that that falls into that category. So we would object to the removal of thirty-five. We would not object to the removal of thirty-six. We would object to thirty-seven, because we're not sure how that would be interpreted or who, what that is, because I, I can picture things that would go in C-two, like somebody might be like, uh, oh, I don't know, uh, down in Senatobia, if you ever heard of the place called The Trainwreck? This is just something that's coming to mind. It's stuff that's been taken off in a store and they retail it to the public, but I think it's considered a wholesale warehouse, because it's a really big building, you know, and you sit, you get, uh, discount goods there, kind of like with the store that's at, down there next to Magnolia Lighting and.
Discount Depot.
Discount Depot. So that's what I was picturing, so.
Okay.
I think we would object to the removal of that. And we certainly don't have any objection to removal of all the cannabis-related items. And we have unconditional uses, we have no objection to the removal of number twelve, the mini warehouses, or the fuel pumps as an accessory to convenience store. Although I will point out to you, Alderman kitchens, you see that little red corner, right on the corner, fifty-one in Christopher Lane?
Mm-hmm.
Couldn't stop it there because it's already C-two. Any other questions for me?
So if you're gonna, uh, if you don't have any problem about taking out, uh, get back to my numbers, huh? Uh, thirty-nine through forty-two, can we also just go on under conditional use, take out twenty-two, twenty-two, under conditional use?
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, that makes.
All the cannabis related zone with twenty, twenty-one, and twenty-two.
Yeah, that's what I said, twenty.
Twenty, twenty-one, and twenty-two?
Right.
Yeah, we're absolutely fine with that. Alderman Miller, we've known each other long, so I, and I, you've got lots of experience, so I just would encourage you to go back and look at the Hernando zoning ordinances to make these kind of changes, you know, instead of the spot stuff.
We're in the process of redoing that already.
Excellent.
You know, we, we working on this, uh, as, as, we call it a, a living document.
Yes, sir, absolutely.
And that's what deals, you know, it's changed because.
Times change.
The mirrors have done change, and so we have to change, you know, with the time. We realize that some people don't desire change, but in order for us to do projects like we're just talking about there, it take change, because change come with resources and money that we don't have.
Absolutely.
Other than raising taxes, and that's something that this board, or I can think I can speak for this board, that none of us is in favor of doing something like that, correct? And so we have to look at.
Absolutely.
Thing that's gonna bring in revenue for the city that, also that the majority of the citizens that'll be satisfied and pleased with in their community.
Thank you.
Before we bring the public up to speak, do y'all have any more questions for Mr. Reedy at this time? We can, we may call you back, Mr. Reedy.
Oh, yeah, I might as well come back.
Is there anyone who would like to speak on this topic? Mr. Beard?
For the recording, I'm Dan Beard in ten sixty-five Froney Drive. Um, I'm opposed to this zoning change, and I'll, um, give you a couple of reasons. I think in spite of the encouragement that the applicant had to do two separate non-contiguous lots, um, in one application, I, I think that's gotta be a mistake. I, I can't imagine that that is proper, uh, so I would, um, ask you to consider that. Um, and number two, um, I think that Pleasant Hill Development LLC is not a company that is operating, uh, in a way that's beneficial to the town of Hernando. I'm not impugning Mr. Wilkins' character, I'm talking about the company. Um, they, I have, uh, close knowledge of a previous project that they did a similar code change on, uh, including some exceptions that were, uh, put in to the documentation at the time, and since that time, um, uh, he has not fulfilled the requirements that were agreed to, for example, maintaining, um, a plant hedge that would obscure the neighborhood's view, and, um, he has not followed, as far as I can tell, and I've asked Austin a couple of times in person, um, I did it by email the other day, but I guess he's incapacitated or, uh, whatever right now, so, um, I think that he's out of compliance in this project that I'm talking about with the, uh, agreements that he made and the goodwill that the board extended to him, uh, for converting, uh, an AR lot that's in right part of a residential community into C-two. So the track record of this company is not good from my experience and observation. Um, I'm not opposed to development, but I think you need to have, uh, people who will meet the obligation to not only take care of their business and, and their shareholders and whatever's involved in their organization, uh, but they have to have an eye for taking care of the appearance and operation of our community. Um, I think this company can't do that. So I'm opposed to this, and I wish, uh, I hope that you will understand that there are probably other organizations that could, um, do a better job than this corporation LLC.
In response, I'd like to ask our attorney a question. It's just, this for the attorney, so.
Okay.
First of all, uh, it's my understanding that was said earlier, first of all, these two separate pieces are partial, and it was recommended from the planning department that these, that these rezoning come in together at the same time, which is legal. Then the next thing is that, which is illegal for us to consider something else with another development, that's another route you take. You can't take in, I'm talking to the attorney, so I, I want to make sure I'm addressed, ain't that right, Ms. Pittman? Am I correct from a legal standpoint?
This application is legal.
Yeah, and then plus the other part about his concern about what the company did on another project cannot be considered on this rezoning, that's a whole separate project to do for somebody to file a complaint for non-compliance, and then we deal with that on a separate thing. We can't bring that in and deal with this rezoning, whether you're far against it, I'm.
That's okay. Alderman Miller, I agree, uh, with what you're saying. I don't think Mr. Bearden is saying that, he's just giving an opinion, uh, for you to consider this because he doesn't think, he's, he's opining on, uh, the way the company he, that he perceives would do business with this project. You don't have to compare the two at all, but you certainly can, uh, but we don't know, he hasn't provided any information, uh, like you say, has there, has there been any, any one that's filed a complaint? Is the project to a point where it's, it's done and it's, you know, and, and has it been approved for final plot approval and all of that? So we don't, we don't really know any of that, so I, you know, to try to compare those two things i- is difficult, those two, two actual projects without more information.
Thank you. And I'm not trying to bring any other action, I'm speaking to the character and nature of this corporation.
Okay, thank you. Who else would like to speak? Anyone else like to speak? Mr. Reedy, did you have some follow-up?
I do. Um, I, I, I do be careful here. Y'all know how plain spoken I am. Uh, Alderman Miller might arrest me in the old days, but, uh, in one of his other capacities, uh, Mr. Bearden has a personal vendetta, obviously, because he lives over there off of Wooton Drive, I think it is, where the other, uh, one of other Pleasant Hills, and since he's impugning the integrity, he can call it Pleasant Hill all he wants to, but that's insulting to me and it's misrepresentations made to this board, and so I think I, I would have to say in behalf of my client, uh, against Pleasant Hill LLC and Mr. Wilkins, that it is, and he, he can hide behind the name all he wants to, but he just doesn't like what would the city approved and was done over there, but I will remind this board, since this board did it, I probably don't need to, most of you are on the board, uh, at that time, but, uh, Mr. Wilkins went above and beyond what was required to be done over there to screen that road, and all the screening, which is above and beyond y'all's code as to what needs to be done, was planted. Mr. Wilkins did something even more than what is required. He actually put an irrigation system in on all that planting along the road, so it would grow back up into a full screen. Obviously, it's not had time to do it because the trees have to mature. Some of the trees did die because we had a record drought this summer. We're just now coming out of it, I think we're still, the Department of Agriculture says we're still in a drought, right? Uh, but the trees that have died are going to be replaced, so that's a misrepresentation. The, there's been more dirt taken out since, which y'all had seen before, but that was because Mr. Wilkins was approached by the county as a good citizen of the county to ask if he would let the county get the dirt off the, the extra dirt that was still on that lot over there that he's talking about on Pleasant Hill Road in order to build the ag center. So that was something else to benefit the community. While that dirt work was being done, even though it was not required of Mr. Wilkins, Mr. Wilkins went to the four houses that were across the street that the dust control measures that are imposed by the state of Mississippi, and was done by the county's contractor, who was Mr. Talbot that lives in that same subdivision, uh, he did the drilling over there and approved the quality of the dirt for the ag center, but Mr. Wilkins went and bought car wash, free passes, and gave them to those four house members where the dust kept blowing up on the houses because it couldn't be controlled, because it was so much during the dry time and that was going on. So, uh, I think Mr. Bearden has made a complete misrepresentation. Clearly, it's legal, uh, it was recommended by the department, the fashion of this, your attorney has just confirmed that, so I would ask that the, the board just take that for what it's worth and approve the rezoning request by Pleasant Hill LLC.
Any other questions from this board for Mr. Reedy? If not, is there a motion on this item?
Mayor, I motioned to recommend approval to the Board of Alderman of an application by George Reedy of a rezoning as detailed in the attached proposal. The subject property is located on the north side of Christopher Lane, east side of Highway fifty-one, based upon the following findings, one through three, with the, uh, redacted, is that the best word? Redacted, eliminated.
Withdrawn.
Uses, withdrawn, attorneys, fancy words. That's my motion.
Just threw one out there.
Thank you.
We're not done, Bruce. Are you gonna list them?
You gonna list the numbers?
Uh, if I need to, uh, two, four.
You got them, Joe.
Can I list them?
Yeah, please.
Yeah, just rip those off real quick.
Okay.
Redacted, uh.
Redacted, uh, would be number two, number four, number eighteen, number twenty-eight, number thirty-six, thirty-eight, thirty-nine, forty-one, forty-two. Additional uses, number twelve, number twenty-three, I'm sorry, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-three. Redacted.
I think forty, I don't think you said forty.
Forty as well. Forty as well.
Forty was, I don't have a forty.
You don't have a forty?
Forty's one of the cannabis ones.
It's just a cannabis one?
Well, when we...
It was one of the cannabis ones, number forty.
From thirty-nine to, thirty-nine through forty-two.
Yes, thirty-nine through forty-two.
As listed all, so I move.
There is a full motion now. Alderman Robinson, did you want to still second that one?
Please.
There's a motion and a second. We'll have a roll call vote.
Alderman Piper?
Aye.
Alderman McLendon?
Aye.
Alderwoman Lynch?
Aye.
Alderman Miller?
Aye.
Alderman Robinson?
Aye.
Alderman Wicker?
Aye.
Alderman Kitchens?
Aye.
That motion passes. Uh, Kristen, would you start us out on item thirteen, PL nineteen thirty-one?
Um, thirteen, PL nineteen thirty-one is Miles Minor Subdivision. This is a request for a final plat approval to combine three large, three lots into one larger lot located on the west side of Memphis Street and south of Green Tea Road. Kevin Miles is representing the application. The property is zoned agricultural, and the total acreage of the three lots is five point four six eight acres, and they are all under common ownership. Um, the bulk requirements for a zoning decision are included in your staff report, and all existing structures meet or exceed these requirements as well as the lot sizes. Um, on the plat, you'll see that there is an existing ingress egress easement on the south side of that parcel. Um, that provides access to the wheel height parcel that's in the rear of these lots, and this is a longstanding easement, and there are no proposed changes to that easement. Mr. Miles is asking for the three parcels in and around three forty-three Memphis Street to be combined. Um, the applicant, I believe, is present tonight, and I'm available if you have any questions.
Do y'all have any questions for Kristen on this item? Would the applicant like to speak? If not, is there anyone here that would like to speak on that issue? If not, is there a motion from the board?
Um, I motion to grant final plat approval for Miles Minor Subdivision, one lot of five point four six eight acres located on the west side of Memphis Street, south of Green Tea Road, but based upon a finding that the submitted plat generally conforms to the requirements of the city's code and ordinances and are subject to the following conditions. One?
Who was the second? The motion and a second. We'll have a roll call vote.
Alderman Kitchens?
Aye.
Alderman Piper?
Aye.
Alderman McLendon?
Aye.
Alderwoman Lynch?
Aye.
Alderman Miller?
Aye.
Alderman Robinson?
He said he had to go to a meeting. He just sent me a text, so he has exited.
Alderman Wicker?
Aye.
And that motion passes. Item fourteen is PL nineteen forty-one. Kristen, could you present that one to us?
This is a final plat approval for Crestview Phase One, located on the west side of Keeneland Drive and south of Mylum Lane. Um, Ben Smith is representing the application. The current phase is eighteen point thirty-nine acres and is proposed to have twenty-eight single-family lots and two common open spaces. The existing zoning is PUD. Uh, the PUD was approved by the Board of Aldermen on May twenty-first, twenty twenty-four. And in accordance with our subdivision regulations, that approval serves as the preliminary plat and authorizes construction to proceed. Uh, at the rezoning approval, the developer to appea- to help out with some of the neighboring property owners, um, the developer offered voluntary, voluntary conditions of approval and restrictive covenants, um, to be submitted at the time of the PUD submittal. Uh, these are included in your staff report, and condition eleven on the staff comments is that these conditions will tie in with everything that the developer has offered, will tie originally to the plat. Um, the, this includes the minimum home sizes, architectural features, and other regulations. The bulk requirements and setbacks that are listed in the staff report are what were approved in the twenty twenty-four putt approval, and this plat that was, is proposed tonight does substantially conform to the preliminary submittal. Um, the standard subdivision conditions are included in the staff report with the addition of number eleven, which is, addresses the voluntary conditions, um, offered by the developer, and we have also added condition number twelve, which designates the speed limit as twenty-five miles per hour. At the planning commission meeting, um, the residents had some concerns regarding the speed limit, so Mr. Cardosi spoke with Chief Ellis, um, and chief did approve the twenty-five mile per hour speed limit throughout the subdivision. So, we just wanted to make sure that was stated in the staff report. Um, I believe Mr. Ben Smith is here tonight to represent, um, he's not here. He's not here either. I'm curious if you have any questions for me.
Chief, did this speed limit, uh, match up with what was in the surrounding areas?
Yes, sir, I believe it does.
I'll take the believe then. It was, it was a yes or no question, but...
I can, I can verify that. I, I believe it does match.
Okay. Yeah, that's what I'm saying, you know? Okay.
Do we know, I don't know if this is a Kristen question or if it's somebody else. Do we know if the connecting neighborhood roads have, are they bonded out? Like Singletree and Mylum and Keeneland West, are they bonded out, like, for any kind of potential construction issue?
No, they are, are not being used as construction entrances right now.
Well, I mean, they, they shouldn't be, right? But I got pictures of big trucks parked on those roads from time to time. So, it does happen. I know it's mistakes and like all the stuff, right? And sometimes sidewalks get dri- driven over and like all the stuff. So, we have to be able to, if they're not bonded out, like, is it, when can, can that happen now, or is it too, are we too far gone in that process?
Yeah, would you like to speak to that?
He's asking about the bond?
Or bonding of roads that are not within the development for maintenance?
Or even, or even the, the linear part that goes across Mackinville. I know that it has gotten some, right, so...
We have, uh, set a bond for the improvements that are not there yet. Um, we can add to a, an off-street road if that's your recommendation.
Okay. Is it, do we do that this evening, or would it be done at another time?
Um, yeah, we'd have to include it in the bond.
Yeah, because it's the file now.
Set for.
Okay. That would be something I would like everybody just to consider because I think there is some, I don't think there, nothing has, nothing has happened yet. Like, I don't want to portray it like there's this huge thing everybody needs to be paying attention to, but, but mistakes get made from time to time. It's not a reflection of the, the developer, the builder, anything like that. People make mistakes. You have subcontractors doing stuff, and they want to take a shortcut, and I totally get it. I think we've all taken shortcuts at some point in life, right? So, um, we just want to have that, that level of protection for the two, two neighborhoods that are there, I think.
We've done that before.
Yeah, for sure.
This is not the first time.
All right. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Please come speak to us.
My name is Steve Cannavaro. I work for Ben Smith, which is Smith Walker. Uh, I think we have worked with staff and, and we're trying to get this final plat approved so we can get some houses built in that area. So, if I have any questions, I'll try to answer them.
How does the water drain from the lots? Does it, does any of it drain behind the houses?
Does it drain behind? There's a, there's a huge ditch between sections.
Okay.
So, it drains through the ditch that's, uh, regulated by FEMA.
Yeah, but I mean, from the lot themselves, do they, do all the lots drain to the road?
Uh, that's, do they drain to the road?
Or will they?
I'm gonna say basic yes. I, I can't answer that question because it, some of them may drain, uh, across and into the street.
Across other lots, like the back of other lots?
Not the back. There's a, it all drains toward the street, and some of the, uh, on the lower side of the street may drain directly to the ditch.
Okay.
From front to back.
But nothing, but that's my main concern is a lot of times, uh, builders have run water through the back of lots.
Through, through shared backyards.
Yeah, through shared backyards, and then it'll get obstructed by fence or...
If you look at the plat, there's, uh, those, uh, there's lots on the west side of Leighton Drive there that drain directly to the ditch.
Yeah.
So, I, that's how I have to answer your question.
Right. But that, my main thing was through shared backyards is a good way to say it. Uh, that's something I was...
That's really what I was asking, but is someone basically taking somebody else's water? Is that going to be the, the way that...
Well, these lots, there's really, uh, what the situation you're talking about is, it doesn't apply to this section of Crestview.
Good deal.
Great question. We've had trouble with that before. Any other questions for the developer, or for the engineer, I should say? Is there anyone here that wants to speak on this topic? Not? Is there a motion from the board?
I can make a motion. Motion to grant final plat approval for Crestview Phase One, consisting of twenty-eight single-family residential lots and two common open space, uh, eighteen point three nine acres, based upon the findings that submitted found plaque generally confirm to the requirements of the city codes and ordinance and subject to the following condition, one through twelve.
There's a motion and a second. We'll have a roll call vote.
Are we not, are we gonna include the bonding or not?
Include it.
Sir?
Yeah, we'll, we'll include the bonding also. Uh, bonding to be determined by the city engineer.
Okay, the motion has been amended.
Second.
It's the second, second to the amended motion. Well, now we'll have a roll call vote.
Alderman Wicker?
Aye.
Alderman Kitchens?
Aye.
Alderman Piper?
Aye.
Alderman McLendon?
Aye.
Alderwoman Lynch?
Aye.
Alderman Miller?
Aye.
The motion passes. Thank you, sir.
Thank you for your time.
Item fifteen was the tabled in November of, at our November fourth meeting, the last one, uh, and we're now, after they conferred with each other, the two departments, we're requesting board approval of agreement between the Parks and Rec Department with current fleet tracking provider, LB Technology, and for me to sign it. They determined that there was really no, um, money to be saved.
Call save.
Uh, by joining the departments together. So, they did look into it and thank y'all for the recommendation, but now we're asking for a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. The motion passes. Item sixteen is the utility adjustments.
Question.
Motion by Mr. Kitchens.
Second.
Second by Alderman McLendon. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes.
I'll stick here.
Is there a second?
Bruce, sit here a second.
Mr. Kitchen seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.